To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you today to pray for unity among everyone in our community. We ask that you guide and direct each board member as they effectively work together to provide services and support in our community. May they be guided by wisdom and compassion, but they would work together in the spirit of cooperation, putting aside any differences and personal agendas for the greater good. From Psalm 133, behold how good and pleasant it is when brothers dwell in unity. We ask all of this in the name of the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
All right, let's take your roll.
Supervisor Lightfoot, Supervisor Olson.
Here.
Supervisor Parker.
Here.
Supervisor Millerburn.
Here.
Supervisor Siri.
Here.
All right, just to be clear, Pam, who called this meeting?
Who called the meeting?
Who called the meeting, this meeting?
H R.
And the members of H R are?
Bob Millerburn and Carol Siri.
Thank you very much. Now, the purpose of this meeting is to consider, discuss, and possibly take action upon a resolution rescinding authorization for an employment contract with interested officer Andrew Lukey. Our attorneys here today, if you'll have the first conference.
The chair is going to have to speak up.
I have the microphone if I need it.
Did you get a mic?
Yeah.
Do that when you have short changeovers.
This does, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item on the agenda is basically readdressing a motion in a resolution that was adopted by the town board in 2023. Minnesota statutes are very clear in conflict of interests and employment contracts like this, it's a very serious thing. There are real consequences that result from some of these, and there's a reason why approval of this type of contract requires a unanimous vote of the town board. This isn't something that just comes up on a whim, or something that should be not looked at. So what this is, the HR group wanted to kind of readdress this, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds on things, but primarily just to address concerns about roles, the role as a town board supervisor, and the role as a town employee. And that is where these issues come up, because in Minnesota cities, elected officials, council members, mayors, they can't be employees of the city. There's a statute that provides that. In townships, it comes up through this contract process. Any contract, any employment that is done by a town board supervisor needs to go through this same process. And in addition to kind of the unanimous votes of the town board saying, we're all on board with this, there are reporting requirements, our affidavits have to be filed by the interested officer, all those kinds of things. And that goes to the auditor looking at you someday, making sure you've followed all these procedures, making sure there are no issues. On top of just the general, any kind of appearance of a conflict of interest, or any kind of appearance of any bias or anything like that, just to avoid any of that. So that's why I say I want to start by saying this isn't a minor thing. What you have, you have a few options. And I'll say the first option that I'm going to recommend, that is based on my conversations and kind of observations of the town board, and staff, and everybody else, is some form of training for, and not just for Supervisor Lucky, but for all of them, and for staff can be involved as well. Some type of training, I've done these trainings before that deal with kind of the basics. It's especially good for new supervisors, open meeting law, you know, kind of some of those other types of basics, but also just kind of training, addressing, maintaining those roles as far as your role as a town board supervisor, and your role as an employee. I would, that would be my recommendation of kind of the options you have here tonight, is to think about that and potentially do that, and then just kind of defer making any decision tonight. If you want to do that, see how that works, and kind of go forward from there. I have seen that work in the past, and a lot of times it's just a misunderstanding of folks who have never been in government, and don't understand the odd quirks. I know the open meeting law is one that catches a lot of people because they just can't quite get in their brain, when I can't talk to my fellow board supervisor outside of a board meeting, or a quorum. So it's hard a lot of times for a lot of people who are new to it, and I've seen people come from the corporate world, or employees that come in and see just different processes, and have a hard time understanding a lot of those. And I'll add that Linwood Township is in a unique position. You are very different than most townships, the 1800 townships in the state of Minnesota. You have staff, you have a fire department, you have other departments. Most townships don't have any of them, and you are very near, you have your own code. Most townships don't have, they're lucky if they have zoning ordinance, let alone a code. So you are very close to being a city, essentially. And there are obviously a number of other processes, not just unemployment issues, but a number of other processes that come into play when your operations are like a city. So that's, I think some of that is just kind of inherent, and some of these things come up just because of the growth of the township, and the different functions that you have, that if you're out there talking to another board supervisor from a different township, they have no idea what you're talking about. They don't have the fire department, they contract with the local city to do their fire services and stuff. They don't have staff, most townships don't have staff at all, let alone kind of the staff that you have. So I think there is some of that that could come into play too, and I think that training would help. So that's kind of my first option. Second option is you can, yeah, second option, you can review the resolution. The resolution that was prepared is basically the same as what was done in 2023, just it requires approval of the town board for the continued kind of acceptance of that conflict of interest between supervisor and employee, or we're not doing it. So those are kind of the options tonight. Like I say, I think just my personal view, just from conversations and observations, I think much of this is just a misunderstanding of some things, and a, and people being new, and I think training would help a great deal. And not just for this particular issue, but for a lot of other issues that I hear about in the township. I do think that would help. So without Stanford questions.
I have a question for you. So for us to go forward with this, so for us to go through with this new resolution, so my question is, for us to go through to this new resolution, do we need to rescind the last resolution that we've already passed?
No, this is just readdressing that same issue, that same resolution.
So my question now is, if you don't do anything with this, will the other resolutions stay in effect?
Yes.
So I've spent a lot of time going through these. Other than a lot of excess wording, when I compare the two resolutions, they look almost exact in every way, even the title, I mean, other than the word "A," even the title is exactly the same, it addresses the exact same state statute and subdivision. So when I compare the two, one of my confusions is that it looks like we're just redoing the same resolution that we did last year on the 25th. So is there any difference in these, other than what seems to be kind of a lot of conditions and consequences and process stuff? Is there really anything different between the two?
On plan, there is none.
So we're already, I mean, we're already, we've already addressed the conflict of interest issue with Andy from a resolution standpoint?
In 2023.
And so is this something that's supposed to be done annually? Is there an expiration date?
No, it's just coming about based on concerns that have been expressed by H R.
Okay. Which I'll come back to this, but you wanted to mention H R. One of my other confusions is that three supervisors have been completely left out of the loop on this, and has been sold as an H R issue. However, this contract last year, and all that is special leading up to it and about it, was not deemed an H R issue then, all five supervisors were involved in it. So I'm a little confused as to how this can be defined as an H R issue, and three supervisors left out of any discussion or knowledge, or even being able to ask questions, when this was an H R issue last year.
Amazing.
So that's, again, and honestly, you don't even have to answer it, Jason, if you don't want to, it's just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to express the frustration on, I'll just say it from my perspective, that it just seems like this was just a redo, you know, it's just kind of a do-over, and I think what we're doing here, I don't think there's do-overs, and there's things that have passed before, three months ago, that I wish I could do over. But, you know, we've already moved beyond that, and that's why I just don't understand what the, it just, when I try to re-termalize, which I shouldn't do, it creates a lot of speculation as to what the real driving force was behind this coming up right now.
Yes, it does.
If I could just, I don't mean to cut you off, if I could just add, can you imagine any number of circumstances where the town board might do something, circumstances change, and they need to readdress that? There are circumstances that come up where a town board might adopt something, circumstances change, and you got to readdress that. I've seen that in variances, or any other types of things. There's nothing that says you can't redo it, there's nothing that says you have to redo it. So, yeah, I wasn't involved in this 2023 resolution, I mean, I think it's kind of an H R issue, because it's kind of, you are talking about an employee and a town officer. And I think, calling this an H R issue now is, I mean, it's for the town board to act, H R doesn't do anything. Town board makes the decision, there's five of us, so it's entirely up to you what you do. Like I said, my only recommendation is, is based on what I've, the conversations I've had, and what I've seen, and even comments you've made, now, I think if, training and conversations amongst you all, on these issues and on other issues, would be a great benefit. So that's my only suggestion.
So the training, I, just to hear like the answers, I think that said even gets everyone up, what does that look like? What does that look like? I mean, is that something you've done in other communities? But like you said, this is not new to Linwood, this exists 1800 other places, correct? So that exists in terms of how to educate all involved? What does that entail?
Yeah, it would be, you know, probably would be a special board meeting, I wouldn't say we'd do it on the night of a regular meeting, to get in the way of other business, but everybody here can come, an open meeting. I would have training, you know, I have PowerPoint presentations that I've done for, for similar presentations. And, you know, none of this is new. This all comes up in other town boards, other cities. And I think to kind of have that training and nip it in the mud would help, not just for this issue, but for other issues going forward, so that everybody's on the same page as far as what the rules are, what we got to do, and how we handle those. I think it would, rather than groups of supervisors being in silos and being pitted against each other, that doesn't help the township, it doesn't help you individually, it doesn't help anything. I think having that kind of training, and getting folks on the same page would be of a great benefit. And like I say, there's nothing that says you have to do this tonight, you can, you have all, you have the options I talked about, you don't have to do anything, it stays status quo. You can do, kind of, we can talk about the training, and just kind of table this, or just remove it, bring it up later if there continues to be an issue, or something else comes up, you know, but I do think the training would help.
Thank you for that explanation, Jason. So, given that when I go through these two resolutions, they're worded almost exactly the same, and we're already under the existing same kind of contract with Supervisor Lucky, I don't see any reason to take any action of any kind tonight, that's my opinion. And given that this is a special meeting that has a special purpose, I don't think we can really make motions on the training yet. I know you and I talked about this like last July, the need for training for the township here, so I think that is a fantastic recommendation, and I think this board, next Tuesday at this meeting, at the regular board meeting, I think will need to make a motion, move forward, set up some training. I think that's the right path forward, myself.
I agree.
Workshop-type events, where? So it'll be like a workshop-type thing, where you don't necessarily even have to take action at those, they could truly just be educational, informative, form?
You can ask me questions, yeah. And it's, because it's, you know, it's training, there's no, you're not taking any formal action on any city business, you know, it can just be an open discussion of, it'll be, it'd be limited to those issues, the training, but it would just be an open discussion. Like a workshop.
What's the training for?
Seems like we're sidestepping the issue.
We'll get the, by the end of the show.
Jason, I sort of have a problem with this. I don't think there was enough information given that the people here understand. I think that, you know, obviously Bob and I were the HR, everybody's up.
I did not.
Why do that? Come on, people.
And you don't know that either. Anyway, I, I do think that a little bit more explanation should be given. There were reasons that this came up, and those reasons were verified, and we moved forward with the attorney. And that's why we're here. We're here to discuss it.
State the reasons, so what were the reasons?
Yeah, why? We don't know anything about the whys of this.
You don't, you can't know everything because it's an H R issue.
We are H R, we are the people.
Freakulous.
All right, folks, listen. Here's the deal, we're going to try to come up with this, I'm not going to take the fat out of the crowd. Am I clear?
Then give us some answers.
I agree.
You know what, if I can give you an answer, I will, but there are some things by law that we can't say, and I'll say that. Don't get me wrong, I'm not H R, folks, but I do know one thing, and I know what H R has to handle some things from my last job. There's certain things that can be discussed, and certain things that can't be discussed.
You mean what you want to tell us, and what you don't want to tell us, right?
Well, let's put this, if you can accuse me of whatever you want.
I didn't accuse you of anything.
You just did. This is what I'm telling you, folks, this is what I'm telling you, we're not here to get in a battle about this.
Correct.
I am not for this in any way. I think we've already signed this piece of paper, I think the issue has been taken care of already, and I don't see, even see why we're here tonight. But this meeting was called, I'm the chairman of the board, and I will call the meeting. I will run this meeting, plain and simply.
Amen.
And I'm going to have order in here when we have this meeting, I'm not going to have people yelling and screaming at us up here. You may not like this, but at least give us some kind of respect for trying to do the job we're trying to do for you. You may not be happy with some people here, I may not be happy with some of you people out there, but I'll give you a straight answer, and I'll respect you for it, and I just kind of ask you to give me a little respect back. Now, Carol says there's certain things that they can't discuss, this is true. I'm sorry, I don't know how much you do in your job, if you own your own business, you can run it any way you like, but you run a corporate, or you run a government business, there's things that we can and can't do.
So what can you tell us?
Well, I can tell you right now, if we do not move on this, nothing changes, it goes back the way it was, Andy stays working on the fire department like he is, he submits the paperwork like he does, and we continue on with him being a board supervisor.
Amen.
And, Mr. Attorney, since you sit down, you're so quiet.
I've been doing most of the talking.
Well, it don't seem like the last couple minutes you have, man. So I'm just going to ask you a question.
No, you're on track. There are things, this can't turn into a performance review in what?
And that's, and that's what I'm saying, you certainly can, clearly can, I know this. But, so I'm going to ask you this. If we make a motion one way or another, can Andy vote on this?
No, Andy has to recuse himself.
Okay, so Andy has to recuse himself. So, let me see how I want to, hang on a second. Andy?
In light of what you presented, I would really implore the board to get more educated on the process, to have the dialogue and conversation, because I have not been involved in some of these. So, in light of that, and what Mr. Hill is offering, at the cost of the people of Linwood, that this board move forward, and a lot of these words that were spoken here at the beginning, and find a way to be educated on the process, before dragging this township down another path that might be detrimental in terms of cost for affecting public safety.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to make the motion that we leave this open, and we go for the training, and we see how it goes, and I, that's my motion.
What's the training again?
I've got a motion on the floor to... I'm going to try to get this right, Carol. Carol, so you made a motion to not act on this tonight, and to schedule the training, and bring this up at a later issue, at a later time, is that what you're saying?
Maybe we'll never work it up again.
Okay. So, the motion is to not act on this tonight, and schedule training, so we can be trained on this issue. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Sorry.
Hearing that, the motion dies. Okay, any other discussion on this board? So, okay, here we go.
Yeah, I think training falls within the general concept of... So, in the spirit of Supervisor Siri's motion, I would make a motion that this board moves forward with some training, on the subject matter, leading into workshops, educational stuff, that we sort of started last year with the budget one, whatever we can do to get ourselves continually educated on the ever-changing laws and statutes that affect Minnesota townships.
Employment, actually finishing on the 40th, Mike, remember, the Minnesota legislature changed our last year, a lot of changes, so like you say, everything kind of involves...
Okay, I've got a, I've got a motion on the floor to schedule training for the board members, is that correct? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
That it been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I think that the training, I think this training, just to be very clear, is not just for the supervisors, but I think staff should all saw, as Jason said, be invited into this, so that we can all become equally educated on the same things.
Andy? Let it be settled, include that. Any more discussions? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Any other motions to be brought before the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something, I have to, it's the same thing 27 years ago, for the same reasons, firefighter, not on the town board. What your procedure is, is similar to what we were advised at the time. By elevator, you're staying from certain, most of the fact, firefighters, you're following the same thing. The one question I have about training, I know there's an opportunity to go to the Association of Townships meeting every year, a couple times a year, I don't think that would help much in this situation, I think you need in-house, because as the attorney said, we are on the verge of a sink, it's different than townships. And I do think that if they're going to go through education, it should be both of just our own township, our own personnel, employees maybe, and also employees of certain giants. I mean, I, I think sensitivity training, I think everybody's got to go through it and understand what the rules and what the regulations are.
All right, basically Joe's saying, I think it's a good idea to have the training in-house, would be a better training here. I'm going to take some questions from the floor. Marine, what do you got?
Yes, sir. I'd like to offer a little information, and address Jason at the same time. I've been a Linwood resident here for 24 years, my name is Edmund Ergos. I've served in the government for 40 years, 14 of that was in the Marine Corps. I've served on dot org organizations for 39 years, okay? I see what's happening here, it, people are lacking information. First of all, Mr. Lucky is under contract, correct, Jason?
He is.
As a firefighter?
As a firefighter.
Does he get compensated?
Yep.
Okay. So, the simplest way to handle this is, and you folks have the authority and ability to write this into your books, he just abstains from voting for his salary increase, and any departmental needs that the town needs, and that's what he's doing.
Very simple.
And that's what he does.
Yeah, so why are we trying to change that? Right.
Well, we're not, that's the thing.
H R is.
366-705.
H R.
366-705, sir, it's a state statute.
It's a conflict of interest.
Not according to statute, sir, it's not org.
I'm here to tell you it is, folks, I'm aware of it, we're following it, we're going to get better educated, and inform with everything it is.
All right. All right. You're next.
All right, so since there's three boards up for reelection this year, would the, if anyone in here was ready for, to be on the board member, would it be good to save a little money and have them have the training at the same time?
Okay, I had somebody over here first before, I'm, I'm gonna get back to you back there in the green, hang on a minute. I got somebody over here, yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as far as training goes, how does that resolve or solve the conflict of interest?
I think it's more to help us know what we can and can't do, I think is what it's more down the line of. It's more to educate us on what we can and what we can and can't do. Which, more knows to change laws every day.
So after this training goes through, will this be brought back up to all of a sudden there is a conflict of interest? Or there is, isn't?
Of course there will.
I can't answer that question.
Of course I will.
Maybe yes, maybe no.
It just depends on how H R feels.
Okay, hang on, um, guy back there in the green, the wild swat, the wild shirt.
My question is, if, because you appointed him, is this the problem? Or if he was elected?
No, it makes no difference.
It makes no difference?
It makes no difference. Although I can tell you, when I was on the board last time, I was also on the fire department, I never signed the single sheet of paper. But moving on, there's a lady over here someplace, right there, you in the green?
This whole time, I understand that we can't know what's going on because it's an H R issue. Now, if everything you're saying, it sounds like someone got their feelings hurt on the board, and you're turning it from an H R issue to a conflict of interest? How does that pan out?
Well, we actually addressed this last year when Andy signed this form. He actually has already signed resolution, just about the exact same resolution last year. And something came up with the H R that thought, they thought they need to bring this up and get this revised again, so. That's all I can think, because I know nothing more than you do right there.
Isn't it the same?
That's the only approved information I've got. Okay, I have, over here, far right. Well, that, that, pretty much, whoever's on the board, if you decide you're gonna take the H R, you need to get educated in some way to be able, at least be able to follow the guidelines, and depend a lot on your attorney. And I think that's what that was. Way back there in the back, gray hat.
Are any of the board members opposed to making this training annual?
Oh, no. Believe me, I'm, I'm, I'm all for trading, we could do that, that's what we could have. Wait, did I get somebody? Yes?
Yeah, so if this were a campaign poll, let's say, hypothetically, I know it didn't take on, but if the two H R people were going to vote on this, and they're the ones with the issue, isn't that a conflict of interest? Because they obviously have the issue with said individual, right? Oh, would they be able to vote on it?
It would not be a conflict of interest.
Ah, okay.
Well, you see, but one problem with Andy, getting into conflict of interest, this is some fact that he draws monetary back. And that's where it becomes a conflict of interest, where he's actually getting something, getting money back to do this. So, yes, ma'am?
I have two questions. So, is Mr. Luckey the only town board member that receives compensation for any duties outside of their supervisory duties from Linwood Township?
Nope.
As far as I know? Yeah?
Currently, yes.
Wow, that's not true.
Okay.
What?
I mean, that's not true.
Who else does?
One of the duties of the town board, the supervisor, it's very limited. So if they're doing work outside of their duties as a town board and being compensated for it, then it's compensation from the township.
Who is doing what?
Oh, they all have done work, whether it's through Linwood days, or attending additional meetings, or that aren't a part of their town board duties, that's compensated.
Well, the addition, the additional meetings are part of our duties.
Some of them, not all of them.
So, um, hang on, I had somebody second. You were always, ma'am?
I was just recommending some H R background, I've worked in H R, and establishing ongoing recurring training. So it's great that you're gonna do some kind of training now, but I think that needs to be an annual requirement by the entire board, new and old, existing, to ensure that you're upholding, following the laws, following all of the guidelines that need to be adhered to.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, uh, go ahead.
To the chair, Jason, just one quick question. You said this is not right because it's against the law, is that what you tried to say earlier? And if it is, what is the specific law? It's a state, county, it's obviously not municipal, that's what we're arguing right now. Do you know the specific statute? I mean, I think these folks would wanna read that statute also. It's, it's kind of additional information.
I can't rattle the number off the top of my head, but it's a conflict of interest to have contract. That financial contract between officer and employee, it's a conflict of interest. If you give me your name, I'll get you the statute numbers.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Maybe I'll sit on the next town board meeting.
That's probably a good idea also, to make a general information to all those folks, correct?
Hmm, yes.
Okay. Yes, sir.
You represent all of these folks, right?
I represent town.
But you represent the board?
Yeah.
Okay, would you have represented Andy, or would he have had to have his own attorney?
He would, I can't represent an individual for a specific thing. He would have to have an attorney.
Okay. Now, would, would those fine folks over there on the end have to have their own attorney too?
No, they were working as representatives of the township at the time, as the H R partner.
I've got a different perspective on it, but that's okay, that's immediate.
All right. Okay. There.
Just one quick question, so if I understand this right, she works for H R and someone else works for H R up there?
Yeah, Bob, Ms. Milvert, and Miss Terry.
Okay, so they both work for H R, so they're pulling how many hours a week?
They don't, they're, they're, that's just one of their duties as.
As town board.
As a town board supervisor. Okay, do I have any more questions? Yes, ma'am.
So is this training that's gonna be held, is that gonna be open to the whole community so they can see what's going on?
Yes, ma'am.
With transparency?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Careful, grab something, hang on.
You didn't hold.
Yeah, hang on to something.
I've been on a planning mission for here nine years, and I haven't given up, and I've seen much, I can't hear. I couldn't read the stuff. Anyway, I don't see any conflict of interest with a volunteer fire department man and working with you guys on a town board. I, I, I just don't see anything there, I don't know, working, contract with businesses, you know, I don't mean to pick on Mr. Olson like that. That could be a conflict. You're accepting your wife's salary, you know, I, I don't, you know.
Not his wife. Not his wife.
That's not his wife.
Andersons and Olsons in Minnesota, that's all it is.
All right. Yes, ma'am, straight in the back, dark blue shirt.
So when you created the resolution last year, did the attorney not look it over and just, and see that there was a conflict? Because if there would have been a conflict when you signed it last year, where was he in that process?
They, we really didn't see a conflict that, last year, in this resolution.
So the attorneys don't look over contracts?
There was a conflict, that's why you had to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, there was a conflict, so we had to adopt the resolution, which passed unanimously.
Yeah, the attorney did drown out one, because that was my experience, that was.
Okay.
There's a conflict.
Okay, now there was.
We acknowledged a conflict. At my interview. It's there, so it's, I'm part of the process, and I am all for the education for all board members, staff, and the township, because this is awesome, that everybody is here learning and getting involved in this, that's huge.
Okay, the guy in the light blue jacket.
Dan MoMo, education is fine. We get caught up in all the bureaucracy, but you made a decision in 2023 that it was okay. That should stand, it's a done deal, it should not have to come up again. So, unless there's a problem legally, and even if it is, I don't trust a lot of the outside, like the attorney just said, we are a unit in ourselves here. If we say it's okay, and you've obviously went over that in 2023, then it should stand. It's still okay, that, that, this meeting shouldn't even be, be, being held. What should have been simply done is, in some meeting somewhere, and I don't know how many meetings and groups there are, it should have been brought up there, not in a situation where it affected all of us and getting limited information. But my question to Andy is, Andy, do you feel that you have a conflict of interest in what's happening today here in our township?
Absolutely. I make a wage as a firefighter. I wholeheartedly support everything this man just said. And I think it just comes to light that more people, I, trust me, I bury it. Minnesota Association of Townships, you get everything you need, you see, you have a better understanding. It exists for, like you said, firefighters. It's not limited to that specific thing, it's not narrow-minded on that side of it. It's ditch mowers, plow drivers, if you're in here doing office work, anything you're doing outside of this role, and I think that's what the education will bring in, in terms of what the supervisor role is, and what activities are outside of that, that'll help understand what it is.
Then how do you feel about the 2023 resolution that was unanimously approved?
In terms of it should still stand.
I think what you're trying to ask is, have you participated in any conflict of interest?
No, I abstain on both.
Correct, that's really what you're getting at, he's never done anything wrong.
Right.
It's okay to be on both sides, as long as they deem it's okay. He's never participated in a conflict of interest.
He's, he's never crossed the line that would consider it a conflict of interest, put it that way.
So why do we?
Yeah, what's, what's the problem? Let us know, H R.
To my knowledge, he's never crossed that line, so I'm just gonna leave it at that. There was somebody back.
Bad optics.
I got right here, the dark blue shirt.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, we're a unit of our own, functioning in our own way as a township, but Andy lives here, there's an elementary school, he's saving lives, he's, uh, welcome. When I was back there at the recycling fairing hall, he's a welcome place for the first from the fire department. And I can't see a better man serving as supervisor, um, in that, that should.
So if there isn't any accusations of any kind of conflict of interest are being participated in, why are we here talking about the same resolution again? Why put them through all?
Yeah.
Right.
They're not gonna tell us.
Jason?
We're not gonna, no, they're not.
It goes back to that, what we talked about, training will address separate roles of town board supervisor, what you can and can't do, and employee, what you can and can't do. Can't get any more specific on H R issues. Sorry, but that's. So, so, but what made it come up? If he didn't do anything wrong, if he didn't participate in conflict of interest, who'd kick the horn's nest to say there's an issue? It's a issue.
H R.
Unfortunately, that isn't the H R as you know, where it tends to stay. That's what they'll say, that I don't know, and that's why they think they can't discuss. So, I'm gonna take two more questions, I got this lady right here.
Hello, Laura Herman, I've lived here forty four, forty five years. Um, so, I understand the education, it's good. So you're gonna separate the roles and whatever, and is that going to be written into the township law, so to speak, so it doesn't come up again? So that it's stated in fact that Andy works on, you know, firemen, not, he's a supervisor. Are you gonna separate and say that in, in writing, that it be obtained? So anybody else that would have a conflict of interest would have to sign a piece of paper, but is it in the township law, or code, or whatever you wanna call it? So that's what I want, so you get all your training done, give you your separation, but is it gonna be written in a form, way that, that is doable, so you can process it on a meeting, or whatever you wanna do? So it needs to be, it's good to have the training, but you have to write this down so that's in the law books here?
I think that that's in state statute.
Yeah, Minnesota took your.
And I think it's four seventy one point eight nine, uh, subdivision. No, that's four seventy eight eight five. So that's, that's the resol, that's the resolution, but if you look at four seventy one eighty nine, I think it's forty two, that also, has some, that also, so. Yes, sir?
If I could just add kind of response to that, it's not something that would go into the code, but it might be something that you wanna put into, it might be something that you wanna put into some kind of policy, just because you do have, like I said, because you do have some of those townships staff, and then all the plugin issues that come with that. You have a fire department, so it might be good to take.
Okay, I got, pick one more question. Lady back there waving her arm, and she's fine. She's wearing her a bit, would you please stand up and talk to us?
Hi, my question is, for H R, how long have you been in this role? How long can you be in an H R role? And how does one apply to be in an H R role for our township?
When they are selected through, when we go through our reorganization, um, on who takes what position, certain people don't wanna do certain roles, and certain people do. And they are selected, we, they will ask to take those positions, and we'll either agree with it or not agree with it.
So how long do they actually serve as an H R person then?
Well, they stay on there for a year, if they wanna get off it, or if somebody did not like them, and they did not agree to it, we'd have to select somebody else for that position.
So how would you go about applying for an H R position then to the township?
You have to become a town board supervisor, you would put your two dollars in the bucket and run for office.
Three dollars now.
More like four.
All right. That's all, that's all the questions I'm taking, we're pretty much done. Um, I will entertain, if there's nothing else coming before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's been a little, a second, any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, ladies and gentlemen.
Opposed.
And I would like to see all you people at the annual meeting, I'd be great if we had as many people there, just like you know.
Thank you, guys, all, for all your support, this is awesome to see.